I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As the flag of the state of New Mexico, and as the symbol of perfect friendship among the cultures.
I know how the implication by Commissioner Carlson.
Well, this power heads. Dear and loving God, first, let me say thank you on the behalf of all those who are gathered here today. Thank you for the many abundant blessings that you have given us. Thank you for the measure, our measure of health, and we need to fulfill our callings for substance and for the friendship among all people. Thank you for the ability to be involved in the useful work and for the honor of serving on this commission and its responsibilities. Thank you as well for the freedom to embrace you as we are doing this morning. In the scripture, you have said that the citizens of a community should look to the governing bodies to establish policies that promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray that you will grant us this commission and our various levels of government the wisdom to govern amidst the conflicting interest in issues of time, of the time. A sense of the welfare and needs of our people. A keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even if there is honest disagreement. Personal peace in our lives and joy to all. I pray for the agenda that is set before us today. Please help us make those decisions that will please ye and benefit those who live and work within our community. These things we ask in the Lord's name. Amen.
Amen.
Mister Commissioner, or Mister Chairman, good morning. Good morning Commissioners. We do not receive any written public comments, and I don't know that we have any public comments in the audience. We do have some service awards that we would like to read and acknowledge, and so let's move to item two, service awards. If you would please.
Service awards Joel Paris Public Works, five years. Rebecca Van Kuren, Public Works, five years. Diana Young, Assessors Office, five years.
And we have those service awards. We'll get them distributed to the appropriate personnel. And at some point here in the not-too-distant future, we may... For the past year, we've, we've kind of been doing the same thing, but we'll check and see about if they want to come and be photographed with the commission or, or what they would like to do. But we're, we're very appreciative of, of the years of service. These milestones are significant. They're hard to come by, and we appreciate those years of service and dedication to the county and the community. So, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is a request from the Pearl of the Pecos Arts and Culture District.
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
My name is Kathleen Davis. I'm the Executive Director of the Pearl of the Pecos Arts and Cultural District. I'd like to just say thank you to Mister Strong for helping me get this item in front of you and putting this together with me. For those of you that don't know, the Pearl of the Pecos Arts and Cultural District is in the heart of downtown Carlsbad. It overlaps with the Main Street District and also the historical District. We're a pretty new organization. In 2016, the Creative Carlsbad Arts Council was formed with the goal of getting an arts and cultural district formed. So in 2018, we did submit an application to the State of New Mexico, and we're currently in the startup process of becoming state-designated. We hope to actually complete that within this year or the next, or if COVID put a little pause on things, but we're definitely getting back up. The reason I'm here this morning is I'd like to request permission to paint a mural on Eddy County property. Art and mural tourism is, has become really popular in recent years. It's always been popular, but very recently, it's actually a whole tourism sector in itself, both mural and art tourism. People will travel far and wide to see the murals, get pictures with them. And we would like, in the Arts and Cultural District, to really designate the boundaries of the district by having murals all throughout the district. We do have a couple. They are, they're beautiful. They're older, but, so we would like to add to that. Murals also beautify a community. They deter litter. They can tell a community story through history, characters, and all the themes that we would like the murals in the district to follow will be based on the caverns, Sitting Bull Falls, the flumes, the beach, different local attractions, as well as historical figures, you know, Billy the Kid, maybe even Smokey the Bear, but they're all going to be related to either Carlsbad, Eddy County, or the state of New Mexico in general. So, a real inspiration for this project was Riedoso that in 2019, they launched a mural competition where local artists submitted their ideas, and the Main Street organization there put on a competition, and then these are some of the murals that came out of that. And these pictures you're seeing here are actually from the artists that I would like to paint the mural that I'm presenting to you this morning here in Carlsbad. I have spoken with the Main Street Director of Riedoso, and he did not anticipate the success of this project. He knew it would increase foot traffic and beautify the community, but he had no idea the, the economic driver that it actually was for the businesses that these murals were painted on. So as well as beautifying our committee, increasing, our community, increasing foot traffic, we also hope for these to be an economic driver for the businesses and areas where they're painted, so that people will come and check out those stores. So, this is the lovely piece of land that I would hope to paint a mural on. It's located on the backside of the courthouse. It's just covering the trash cans. And this is what I would like to be displayed there. This is an old historic postcard. I actually found it at the library. They have it there framed. And it does show a lot of local attractions. The courthouse is actually in the third letter there in Carlsbad. We might change out a couple of the letters, but they would include local attractions, maybe the flumes, living desert, just kind of update it and upgrade it a little bit. And we also plan to put Eddy County in the same font beside New Mexico. I just included the budget for this project. The artist, his name's Michael Fish. He is from Riedoso. He painted those last ones that we saw. He, in his contract, he, I mean, he's an artist. He takes pride in his work, so we will include maintenance language in there. He does use anti-graffiti and UV coating at the end of all his projects. As we live in the lovely desert and we don't want sun damage, just like we need for our skins, these murals will have a coating on there, so sun damage won't affect it. If anybody tries to tag or paint over it, that will be able to wash right off with the anti-graffiti. The paint that he uses himself, it has a guarantee of about 20 years, but he has said that he can include some language that as needed, or just maybe on a 10-year basis, take a visit and come and we'll touch up as needed. I have obtained funding from the City of Carlsbad Lodger's Tax for promotional, once this project is complete, so we can get these pictures in New Mexico Magazine, Focus New Mexico, just online. We'll do a lot of heavy online advertising, utilize social media, hashtags, our website, just to really bring awareness and attention to this project. I have also spoken with Nancy Dunn. She's the Arts and Cultural Coordinator in Artesia. They have a very similar postcard, and they're also launching their own mural project within the downtown Artesia District. She's very enthusiastic. They're also running kind of a competition like Riedoso did. But when I mentioned this project to her and how we'd like, you know, it to include Eddy County, not just Carlsbad, we would like to expand it into Artesia, maybe other areas, and she loved the idea. And we'd like to have it be like a southeastern New Mexico, Eddy County art trail between Carlsbad and Artesia. We'd like to use the same artists for both of these murals, just so that they show cohesion and it's the same kind of design between the both. And that's it for me. If you guys have any questions on anything?
When do you anticipate it'll get started?
As soon as possible and as soon as funding is fully secured.
The location in Artesia, do you, do you have one?
There's not one yet.
So, as a possible consideration, you know, we have the county building there, the, um, the main drag, it's a big white wall. The clerk is there, the MDD is there. I don't know if that, that might be a suitable location. You talked with the Artesia Art Council, but that, that might be a, might be an option, because there's, it's just, just a white wall now, right, on that, that building, so. That way, the county could contribute the canvas, so to speak, in both instances, and that might be a possibility.
I have no more questions. I think it's a great idea. Okay.
On the, you mentioned in the letter, the, maybe the beach area in, in one of the letters, and just a little aside, maybe we could show the three diving boards that used to be on the island and the tower with its two diving boards, and half the senior class down there in the game of tag during the summertime. Just being a little nostalgic here, but anyway.
A long time ago.
Very, you can't even run anymore.
Were you there?
I was there. Also jumping off the railroad trestle.
No, nobody ever did that, didn't they?
Do people still do that? We shouldn't talk about that.
So, so the only thing I was thinking as well is, you know, what could we do to the front of our county building here that didn't cost a lot, that we kind of church it up? Obviously, we're not painting a mural here on, on the whole front of the building or something, but something to... Yeah, something to kind of dress up the front of our building here. You know, we've got some nice landscaping kind of coming into town, and I think there's a few things. I just, I support the project. I think it, it has all the effects that, that y'all say, as long as a mural, you know, communicates what we would like it to communicate, and you know, and that's, and that's pride in Eddy County. I believe we've got the funding and lodger's tax to do this. We're, we're okay in that, aren't we?
City's already...
City's already ponied up, but we could, we could go back to the, our lodger's tax board and see if they needed some supplement or something. We could... But this is exactly what that's intended for. So we could, we could check into that. I'll have, I'll have Wes look into it and see if there's a need for additional, or if to cover part of the cost of Artesia, whatever, so. Wes says yes.
Once we, if we get the approval from the commission today, that was our next step, was to take it before the lodger's tax.
Yeah, I, I, it's great. I did. Appreciate you guys, you know, all thinking and turning it around.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Do we need to vote on this?
Yes.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion that we accept the presentation and formal mural request by Kathleen Davis for painting a mural down at the courthouse.
Some moved.
Motion, but I need a second. Second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion and second. Please call for the vote.
Hetchin?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your continued support in the downtown area. We appreciate you guys.
Yep, so, the next item on the, the agenda is our IFB, RFP bid awards. We have two up. Did you get, did you get the, get all of the feedback?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Morning.
Morning.
Mister Chairman Commissioners, IFB 2101 is for annual road construction and, oh, sorry, road construction materials and services. We solicited this bid on February 8th, and we opened all the solicitations on March 3rd. We did receive 23 bids. Only one of them was deemed non-responsive, so we did make award recommendations for multiple vendors, and it's detached on the next several sheets for the bid tabulation sheet. Award under this IFB, we're asking for a multi-price agreement.
You've got it. You gotta answer it.
Oh, I don't.
Which will begin on April 1st, 2021. The contract will renew automatically every year for a total of three years. And so I'm not sure if the Chairman and Commissioners want to go over each one, or the bid tabulation sheet has all the vendors that we're recommending highlighted.
If, if we can get to, maybe to the bid tabs, and if there's any questions, we can focus in on those.
Okay. They're really hard to see.
Yeah. Mister County Manager, is there anything we need to...
So, um, we, we did have some, we had a question and some discussion with Commissioner Carlson about getting clarification on the delivery of the road materials. And in, in the bid, we asked for FOB, the Derrick Road, Roadhouse. And there was one point of clarification for, for awards that would be, the project was closer than, from the source to the project than the FOB delivery yard, that those would, the county would pay the full FOB rate, even though the distance was shorter. For projects that were further than the FOB delivery yard, we would pay mileage on a road ton basis, or a per ton basis.
And that per ton quantity was bid in the...
It was, it's in the bid tabs, yes, sir. So, what we wanted to clarify is that if the project location was less than FOB the yard, we would not pay from the yard to that side again, right? So, if it was less, the vendor gets the benefit. If it was more, the county would pay the difference of distance. And because we didn't have that clarification in there, we went back to the, for those sections, 1B through 19B, we went back and made sure that the vendors understood that was the expectation of that connotation in, in the, in the bid award. And Mister, Mister Burns, Director of Public Works, has reached out to those vendors that had bid in this section and has feedback from all of them that they would, that's, they would recognize and accept that description as we had defined it. So...
And we got a response from all the...
We have.
And they're all in agreement?
They all acknowledge and understand the clarification.
And they're all in agreement? How many, how did you bid total?
Oh, man. We had, um, 150-something items, materials, and 120 services. We broke them up between A and B, services and materials. The benef, the, the intention of this was to expand on our current contract to include materials as, as we've reported. The county's gotten quite proficient at doing a lot of our own maintenance and roadwork, and this allows us the tool to have a county price agreement to continue to improve our operations and not have to utilize such revenue, or avenues of CES and state contracts that oftentimes are assumed and interpreted specifically to us.
Not trying to beat a dead horse to death, but just want to make sure, you know, one thing we talked about was getting an e, uh, email from each one of the contractors agreeing to that. And, and we got those emails.
We have all five emails as of, as of the meeting.
Okay.
We, we do have that all acknowledged and not, and more than verbal.
Okay.
And, and if I'm, if I'm correct here, this has been written that other municipalities or school boards can piggyback off of this if, if so desired. Is that correct?
It is wrote in the bid. That would have to be up to the entity's procurement manager to utilize this deal, and, but yes, we do have the language in there that they can use it.
You know, I, I think this is a great deal. Really appreciate Jason for putting it together. This really promotes all of our local contractors that want to do something with that. A lot of local companies that have, you know, that have put prices in on this, and I think it gives everybody an opportunity to be able to use, for the best, best bang for the buck, based on location, based on delivery, based on everything, the, the right, the right contractor for the, for whatever entity is using it, and benefits the county tremendously. I've had a lot of calls and compliments on, on this, so we appreciate Jason putting this together.
Yeah, and, and, and I want to tell you, it's no small task to put all this together, and so you guys have done a great job.
No, just thank you. I mean, it looks like this has been a, quite a bit of work, so thank you guys. Appreciate it.
No, I, I would, I, I would think that they did a good job putting it together. I mean, we had some questions and stuff that we talked about with Jason, and got my questions all answered.
I'm, I'm good with it. Follow suit here. I appreciate it.
We did have a lot of help. Rodo had a substantial person. Just make sure we got the language right, and, uh, our current contractor, Tammy. Between the three of us, we, it really took some effort, but I think it's going to be a good thing for, in general and overall for the county, to keep our initial, our progress moving forward.
We have a lot of momentum and have accomplished a lot of work. I, I know I've mentioned it at previous meetings, but we're, we're pretty close to being able to share the, the work that Public Works has done in the, I'd say it's 24 months, but the last 18 months after we got our surveys done. And we're completed, work in progress, and, and outlook, and I think when we get to share that with the Commissioners, you'll really... You've seen elements of it, but to see it all together, I think you're going to be really impressed, what's been done, where we're going, and having been able to accomplish it with the funds that you, you all have supported. And I think you're getting feedback. We hear it anecdotally from you at each meeting, the feedback you get from the community and your constituents. They're seeing that progress, and when you get that visible progress happening, I mean, that's, that's what people are looking for, so I think we're on the right track. So, thank you, Jason.
Thank you guys very much. But before we, before we get to a motion, I, I do want everybody to know I've disclosed to Roberta, M. Hat, my company does business with the county. I, but I bid 16 items. I was awarded 11 of those items or something, or five of those items. Just want everybody to know that I will abstain from the vote, but we are in the business to, to do business, and I just want that, want that on record, so. So, now, with that, I will obtain a motion, I will obtain, I will entertain a motion that we accept the IFB annual construction materials and services and, and award to the various contractors that are highlighted here on the sheet.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
McHatchin?
Abstain.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Commissioners. This is a big piece of work.
We now have, I guess we're going to move on to RFP 21-03 Economic Development Services, Roberta.
Mister Chairman Commissioners, RFP 2103 was for Economic Development Services. We solicited this as a multi-vendor award. We did receive two proposals, one from Carlsbad Department of Development, and the other one from Artesia Chamber of Commerce. Because this was an RFP, it did go through an evaluation committee to make sure that all were responsive and suitable. And so we do make recommendation for multi-award to both vendors, Carlsbad Department of Development and Artesia Chamber of Commerce. These have been our vendors in the past for the last several years. They've done a really good job for the county, and so we wish to move forward with them again.
Have any discussion on this?
These are, these awards allow for annual extensions up to three years, and so this is just the refresh of that procurement code.
This one is actually for four years. The IFB we just did was a total of three. This one will be for four years total. So, and this one will have to come back to commission every year if you guys approve, only because this one is based on our budgetary needs through the PSAs that you guys approve.
Any questions?
No questions.
Having no questions, we will entertain a motion to approve RFP 21-03 Economic Development Services.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Having a motion, so I can, please call for the vote.
McHatchin?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Redova?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Roberta. Jason. Um, we'll move into the trailing agenda. The first item is approve the commission meeting minutes for March 2nd, 2021.
Do we have any questions on commission meeting minutes for March 2nd? No, having no questions. I'll entertain a motion that we approve commission meeting minutes for March 2, March 2nd, 2021.
Some moved.
I'll second.
Motion's a second. Please call for the vote.
McHatchin?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Redova?
Yes.
Moving on to expense approval report for February 2021. Any questions?
No, no questions.
Having no questions. Entertain a motion that we approve expense approval, approval report. I'll tell you what.
Little juicy.
Yeah, I'm going to have to get Jessica to read this one. The expense approval report for February 2021. Entertain a motion that we...
Some moved.
Some moved.
I'll second.
Second. Motion's a second. Please call for the vote.
McHatchin?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Redova?
Yes.
Item number two is an overhire for compliance administrator position in Eddy County Detention Center, Warden Massengill.
Good morning, team. How are you? We have one of our lieutenants that's retiring at the end of April, so what we would like to do is go ahead and post that position, then have that individual that's selected be able to cross-train with him the last couple of weeks while, while the, the current position is still there. As you notice, with our, our, our staffing, it'll be absorbed, so there won't be any cost to our budget.
Any questions on the overhire? No questions. Warden Massengill, you kind of get the, you just kind of hang down in the trenches and don't say too much. We appreciate all that you do, so. I support this position. Anything, we do support you. Sure, let us know anytime.
Appreciate you. Thank you.
Make a motion that we accept.
Having a motion, a second. Please call for the vote.
McHatchin?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Redova?
Yes.
Thank you, team.
Thanks, Warden.
Warden, Warden does a lot that we never hear about, and that's, that's good.
And that's a good thing.
He does it right all the time, so that's awesome. The next item on the agenda is the quarterly approval of the Safety Net Care Pool Certification for Public Funds fiscal year 2020, 2021. You are not...
Commissioners, Veronica's daughter had an appointment to get vaccinated this morning, and so I'm here. If I can try to answer any questions that she might have on it. If not, I can get back to her, and she'll be able to get us the answers.
Do we have any questions?
This is just the quarterly pound of flesh.
I'll make a motion. We approve it.
I'll second.
Motion second, please call for the vote.
McCutcheon.
Yes.
Beard.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, Ms. Veronica, you did a swell job, Warden. Next item on the agenda is, uh, budget reallocation for Public Works road equipment. Mr. Burns.
Jason. They're drinking tea.
You were here just a second, Matt. That's right. Your building fell over.
Yeah, my building fell over.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, um, we're coming this morning to request a budget adjustment to procure a, uh, articulating dump truck for the landfill. This will be in replacement of our, uh, CAT six-twenty-three scraper, which lease contract expired um, last month. Um, we've, we've done some number crunching and come to find out that on some of our pieces of equipment, it'd be in the county's interest to buy these, uh, items as we feel that it would be more beneficial and cost, uh, efficient to the taxpayer to own these deals and use them longer than to pay the, um, lease rates that we're currently seeing and experiencing. Um, and just as some of these, some of these contracts expire, uh, we'll come back to you with a few of these. Um, there are some pieces of equipment that we feel are better leased, which are the ones that are constantly in the trash and take the most wear and, um, we'll, we'll take those at a step at a time. But this is for the first one, um, that we feel will improve our operation out of the landfill.
Now, is that the one, is that the road department or is that the landfill?
This is the landfill, sir.
Okay. What about the road?
That's the next one.
It's.
It's on top.
On the budget. It's just back.
Let's do, let's do the road equipment first. It's in the agenda. It's item four, so.
You've done a great job on that one.
Yeah.
Sorry, I was reading this one that was in front of me. I didn't know what to listen to. The road equipment, uh, one that we're, we're discussing now, I apologize for being backwards. Uh, the road equipment, we're coming for and asking for, uh, reallocation. Um, we were able, you approved the budget adjustment last year for us to buy some, uh, heavy equipment uh, with our savings on the roads, you know, which we have received. We received our new chipper and our, uh, distributor, which we were able to go out and procure those at a, um, more efficient cost or a less cost than what we, uh, intended. And we have a little, um, surplus left over, which we would like to procure, uh. We want to do our two twenty-four foot utility trailers, which we'll use to haul our smaller equipment, our brooms and our mowers. And we can get those on a tongue pull behind a pickup instead of having to take a fuel truck tractor out and move those. Uh, we'd like two message boards for some of these larger projects so that we can further, uh, improve the safety and the, the, get the word out that what we're closing. Um, right now, we, we use our PSAs and we, we post everything on Facebook, but, uh, the message boards really get it out to the people that are driving that route. And then along with that, we'd like to, uh, request one skid steer for the road department. So.
Any questions?
Um, I agree that the message boards are very good advertisement. I mean, it's just that reminder to prepare, you know, for people. I've heard a lot about that, so I think it's a great idea.
I make a motion that we approve.
Okay.
I'll second.
I like it as well. Motion, motion in a second. Please call for the vote.
McCutcheon.
Yes.
Beard.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Rorova. Yes.
Wow, to your articulating. I know that's the piece you're really excited about.
Uh, as previously explained, um, this is an articulating truck for the Sandpoint landfill in lieu of our six-twenty-three scraper.
All right. Uh, it's a good deal. Any, any questions?
No questions.
No questions. Entertained a motion that we approve budget adjustment for Public Works landfill department for the six-twenty-three.
Make that motion.
Place in a six-twenty-three.
Make, make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion second, please call for the vote.
McCutcheon.
Yes.
Beard.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Rorova. Yes.
Thank you.
I'm looking forward to that report because they've deposited money in the road department.
Yes, sir.
I'm looking forward to that report here.
We're scheduling those here soon.
We'll move into the resolution and agreement consent agenda on item six.
Okay. Are there any items that we need to discuss and pull, modify? Okay, any questions?
No question.
No? Okay, having no questions, I will entertain a motion that we approve the resolution and agreement consent agenda as presented.
Same route.
I'll second.
Having a motion second, please call for the vote.
McCutcheon.
Yes.
Beard.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Yes.
Excellent. Item seven is department updates. Um, here we go.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
Let's see, unfortunately. Well, everybody saw Facebook, a roof laying on top of a truck at Public Works and on Derek, but, uh, we had a structural engineer out yesterday to verify anything not correct with the building and he gave us a, a verbal with the written report. It'll come today. Uh, we're good to work in that building. No structural damage or no significant structural damage was done to the building other than the roof. It looks, I guess, it looks worse than it really is. Um, currently we're at the mercy of NMC, waiting for some adjusters to come down, take a look and get more pictures. Um, I'm currently gathering all the project documentation from twenty-fifteen, uh, to hand over to those adjusters and then they'll go from there as, as things go. Um, I'll be communicating regularly with county manager and providing updates that way in case any, any of your constituents have any questions. We can get them all right there. So.
What's our deductible?
I believe on something like that is ten thousand dollars, sir. I can get the, I'll get a better answer, but I'm, I'm fairly certain that's what our deductible is on things like that, uh, you know. We've encountered things where people say, oh, just call the insurance. So sometimes, you know, even a twenty-five or thirty thousand dollar claim, it's better for us just to eat it and run with it. But on something like that, you're talking thirteen thousand dollars worth of roof. That I'm going to have to do pull tests on the stuff that's still there. It's, you know, I'd rather the insurance take care of it and they can do all the finger pointing and blame game after we're taken care of.
Great.
Was it on top of one of our trucks?
Yes, sir. Brand new one.
Two weeks old.
Well, that's good at least. I didn't, I didn't see it Facebook, though. We had insurance on it as well, right?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, we did.
Jason nearly teared up though because he said it, is that, that roof came off and onto the hood and figured it totaled it and totaled the truck.
It created the roof and the hood of that deal.
I didn't think it was that heavy, but just the way that it had blown off there looked like it just.
What it caught is it took the, uh, it took the edge of the roof, the, the metal and the wood that held down the DPO and it blew that off with it.
Okay.
That's a heavy piece. Yeah.
Okay.
So it, it did bring some force with it, so.
Wow.
Or in the springtime.
Yeah.
Our fly poles are still standing though. Yeah.
All right.
So as soon as, soon as NMC comes in, then we can get the debris removed and make it good to go to, to do what we need to.
I'm going to go take a lot more pictures today and then I'm just going to ask them if we can get to it because Albert, he needs that bay to get some stuff done in there. That's where one of their biggest lifts are for big oil changes on bigger equipment and so.
Yeah.
I mean,
We need that.
Picture, pictures that come from my phone or someone else's phone are literally the same pictures.
Yeah.
That's what we're trying to do.
And, and, we'll, if you need some, we're working with NMC. We can, we know folks.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. I know that Fire Services is out on, they're out on a brush fire right now, so they've been busy yesterday and last night, so. Oh, my God, there he is. Does he smell like smoke? He did.
Just third lane. Just a couple of updates for y'all. Um, the State Fire Marshal's office will be down at the end of the month to do their inspections on the stations and apparatus and records. Um, I want to thank the sheriff and his personnel for the weekend. It was wild and crazy. We had a lot of calls and they helped us tremendously. Shout out to the volunteers as well. They've been stepping it up. We've been really busy lately, so we appreciate them and that's, that's all I've got. If y'all have any questions, don't hesitate to call. Thank you.
I guess, just, just before you go, Josh, um, something that maybe the commissioners are aware of from your constituents, but, but there's a lot been, as Jason, as Josh said, there's been a lot of demand for, maybe demand is the wrong word, but call out, right? Um, and, you know, City of Artesia has, their fire department, they're challenged in getting and, and keeping staff. And so, um, county's been, and we've always had a mutual aid agreement with both cities. And, uh, oftentimes it's the city who's, who's there to help the county out because volunteers have day jobs and whatnot. Um, now the need is on the county side to help them out. Um, City of Carlsbad, Village of Loving, we've been having some discussions. I guess my point is there's more and more demand on, um, cir- providing quality service within the county and the cities for, for fire and emergency services. And there's, there's something that, um, Josh and, and I have been working on that we think will help improve that overall quality. I think the State Fire Marshal's inspection will, will reaffirm the need for this change and we'll talk more about that as, as we, we come closer here, but maybe at the next fire board with the Commissioner McCutcheon and Commissioner Henry, we can have some of that conversation about what that change looks like, what that would mean for improvement of services to the community and what it would mean for our, uh, Fire Services, uh, department. So. I think we've got a great plan moving ahead that would benefit everybody and I think the Fire Marshal's report will help us in that regard, so.
And they're down to ten personnel, just so you all know.
In Artesia?
Yes, sir. Or yes, no, sorry. Yes, they're, we're actually staffing a couple of guys up there during the week, so to try to help out in case they need help with anything, so.
What are the full numbers?
What are their full numbers?
Yeah, if you're down ten, I mean, what's normal?
So their, their shift minimum is usually ten per shift. They're down to seven per shift. So, so this is what they've told me is if they lose one more, they're just going to drop their average per shift to where it's going to delay them and possibly make it to where they can't respond to fires in the county, which when we have a structured fire, we rely heavily on them because they're at the station equipped, ready to go, so. They help us tremendously, just like Carlsbad does.
What Josh had mentioned is folks from his staff are now working out of our, Artesia, out of the, the district stations in Artesia so that if there's a tone out, they can take a truck, whatever it might need to be, and go with the city fire department. And so, um, that leads to, fits into the plan of kind of a division type setup where you have folks in four divisions that can do this cap- have this capability and have that. So this is a, this is a test of that, kind of a pre, pre-run of that.
Better, uh, better prep for rain, huh, Josh?
Yeah, I need some rain.
Yeah.
Well.
A little more than a little.
Brian and Jason figured since the roof was off the road department, we were due.
Yeah, right.
Open invitation.
Wes.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I won't talk a lot about it. That way I won't steal Commissioner Carlson's stuff. Um, I just wanted to let you, just wanted to let you know that, uh, we did give a, the Arrowhead presentation to Looney County last week. Went very well. Uh, we have one scheduled tonight with the City of Deming Council. Um, Commissioner Carlson and I will go give that presentation and then next week, uh, next Tuesday, we will give an, another presentation to Grant County and that'll be a Zoom presentation, so.
Great. I would appreciate you hitting Rodo and doing that.
We locked the door so nobody could get out.
You gotta do it one way or the other, you know.
We heard you got standing ovations.
I, we did that we were leaving.
No, I, I'll kidding aside, I think the, the folks, you know, from what you mentioned just briefly last evening and the ones, the, the meeting, the Zoom meeting that we did last week, folks were appreciative to understand this information and for Eddie County for kind of looking at it and say, hey. So I, I, I think that's what you suggested last evening, so thank you.
You know, and the thing about it was, it's amazing, and I think Wes will back this, how many, how uneducated the people throughout New Mexico are about the oil and gas activity in Eddie County in southeast of New Mexico. Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you, guys. I've been circulating the Arrowhead study, the, you know, NM, um, oil and gas information and that's the feedback I'm getting as well. People are shocked at where the, the numbers fall, so thank you.
Then, and I'm watching my words.
With, with little, little mod, mod back and forth, you know, and, no, no, use this word, don't you? Mr. Carlson's a quick uptake on that. He's good to go.
Everything I'm seeing, it's having an impact. I think some people that, where it counts are beginning to get it. It may be too little, too late, but.
Well, I, I.
The trouble is, it's never too late.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
I think it's a marathon and I think we're going to, your willingness to go out and share the message as commissioners carries, carries the influence of your, of your position. And telling them now and telling them in a few months and telling them again, um, it will take that influence over a long period of time to change the minds of constituents who then can influence their elected officials to understand more.
Yeah, and we, and we have to take that message to not only the people that are receptive, but the people that are not receptive to it. They need to hear it also. They need to know how important it, they may be against us a- at some point, but the thing about it is we carry that message and, and make them understand that, you know, it's a benefit to them.
Talking about the people that think they're going to replace billions with three hundred million?
Yes, that's the ones I'm talking about.
It's only a hundred million, sir.
And it's four billion. And it's four billion.
And, and we might get an update on that. May or may not happen here, uh, in, in the, in an upcoming agenda item, so. Is there anyone else that would like to present a department update? Seeing none. Um, we'll move to legislative updates. Mr. Fanning.
I was going to ask if anybody would like to give my presentation. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Uh, yeah, this is a, this is a smile on my face and I don't know why. But, um, it's, uh, there's, the good news is, it's Tuesday and the session's over at noon on Saturday. Um, it's, it's, uh, and not to beleaguer the point much, but it's, it's an interesting session to say the least. We have a lot of bills out there. Bills are stacking up. Uh, there's presently fifty-three bills as of this morning on the Senate floor to be heard. There's forty-five bills on the House side. Uh, calendars are like trying to catch a pig and round and, and what I mean by that is, is that we don't know by the hour what's going to look like on a calendar for any of the, any of the meetings or the floor sessions. They are literally changing by the hour. That's, makes things challenging to say the least, but at the same time, some of these bills are moving. And, uh, the good news is some of our transportation bills, uh, which have a potential to help Eddie County are moving in the right direction. Uh, Senate Bill twenty, which is a motor vehicle excise tax distribution, passed both floors. Senate Bill one twenty-one, uh, has passed out of the House. Uh, that deals with the transportation bonds and it looks favorable as far as budget things and, and hearings go. Senate Bill thirty-four, design and build projects, it's also on the House calendar, which means those are all bills that'll benefit us, uh, as far as trying to get road projects on the ground. which means those are all bills that'll benefit us, uh, as far as trying to get road projects on the ground. Uh, I have tried to be in every hearing that those bills are heard on and stand up in favor of and support for Eddy County. I can tell you that, uh, our legislators and especially with Commissioner, I mean with Senator, uh, Kay Kernan has been very successful in moving some of these forward, uh, and helping. Uh, the college, uh, Carlsbad College bills, House Bill Two Twelve is number twenty-seven on the Senate calendar today. Uh, it's sister bill, uh, the Senate Bill Two Thirty-Six is waiting to be scheduled in House Ed and it may die there, but the good news is, is that the House Bill Two Twelve is on the calendar. Uh, Senator Kernan is hopeful that she can get that heard tomorrow or Thursday. So, uh, it, it's, it's had favorable response in its committee hearings and everything seems to be going in the right direction. I won't bring up the rumors, but, um, some rumors are good, some rumors are bad. We'll take the good ones. And so we think it'll be heard on Wednesday or Thursday. The Senate Bill Two Fifty-Six, the Fire Protection Fund, uh, it's, uh, the one that gives our departments money, uh, changes that fund to where we can use it all and, uh, or the fire departments can use it all in emergency services. It's in House Appropriations today. It's, it's flown through and every committee. Looks great. Unanimous decision on all that, at all front fronts. So, uh, we're hoping that after its hearing today, uh, that it continues to move on, onward. Meat bills, uh, these are the bills that have to do with livestock and meat inspections. House Bill Thirty-Three is still on the House calendar. It's been there a long time. The rumblings that they may have hit a snag on those bills and, um, that's not good news this far down on the calendar. Uh, it's number forty-four on the calendar, House Bill, House Bill One Twenty-One, the meat processing bill is still stuck in House Appropriations. There seems to be, from what I can find in, in talking to everyone, that there seems to be people that are in the same niche in the livestock industry, that some of them are for it and some of them are against it. So it makes it very difficult for a bill like that to move when you can't agree with each other that are in the same industry. But we've pushed hard to try to get those bills where they are and they have moved. But they're stuck right now and it's not a good time to be stuck. Senate Bill Eighty-two, the Radioactive Waste Isolation Task Force, which is the anti-Holtech bill, is probably being heard right now as we speak in Ha- House Energy. Uh, Senate Bill Eleven, which is a Clean Fuel Standard Act, it's in there right now and it was scheduled before and as I left, it was still there and I'm sure it's going to get a lot of, uh, conversation on the Clean Energy Act. But let's go back to Senate Bill Eighty-two. This is the Anna Hol- Holtech bill. The interesting thing about this bill is the FIR. Uh, if you look at the FIR, it says there's no fiscal impact for that bill. But as you read down in the context of the FIR, there says there's one point six, one point two, one million two hundred and eighty-nine thousand estimated over a three-year period to reevaluate something that, that we already know that the, uh, NRC is evaluating. But in the FIR, it says one point two million to actually put on extra people to, to look at these things. So, that's, that's interesting, isn't it? That we're going to form a task force of four hundred and something thousand dollars a year to look at numbers that have already been looked at by the NRC. It's moving. It's moved through every committee pretty quickly. And now it's on the House side and it's, today it's in House Energy. Only hope we have is maybe it gets tabled. My hope's not very high. The Clean Fuel, uh, Standard Act is the same thing. When you look at that, uh, well, I, I back up, I'm sorry. Senate Bill Eighty-two does show that there's appropriation it will cost. Senate Bill Eleven's different, okay? Senate Bill Eleven doesn't show anything, but if you look at it, there's one point six million dollar over the four-year period to actually have the agencies go in and look at that, uh, to look at carbon trade and carbon allowances and evaluate that for that particular clean fuel act. Okay, so, interesting. Budget bills are moving. Senate Bill Three Seventy-Seven passed the House yesterday. Uh, that's the junior money bill that actually I have sent some texts out to everyone on. It's, uh, a hundred seventy-two thousand, six hundred dollars for the Southeast Loop Project, uh, that intersection for, uh, safety control there. Uh, Senator Kernan and Senator De Ga- Gallegos are doing a fine job of putting money into that fund from their own, uh, junior money. House Bill Two Eighty-Five, which is a capital outlay, it passed tax and rev yesterday. It contains about eight point two million dollars for, uh, Eddy County, for the cities and for the county. Uh, it looks good. House Bill Two is in Senate finance today. So all the, all the budget bills are moving. But the good part is, we do have some money. We're optimistic about the price of oil and so for this year, we're probably going to get most everything we've asked for. Uh, I'm being optimistic about that, but I feel good about it. I wouldn't say otherwise. So, so much for the good news. Uh, let's talk about, uh, HB Four, the Civil Rights Act bill. It's been on the Senate calendar since Saturday. Uh, it's always, we're going to hear it tomorrow. Very most interesting bill I think I've ever followed. Uh, it's very interested, interesting to see the dynamics of that, even though it's a bad bill. There's all kinds of rumors out there which way the bill's going to go, how it's going to look when it gets there. Many things have been done to try to get the bill killed. Many counties have signed resolutions in opposition of this bill. There's movement trying to get the bill referred to Senate finance today because of the potential, uh, impact to the budget of four point five million dollars estimated. It's not had any kind of financial eyes upon this bill, even though it costs or has a potential to cost these kinds of numbers to counties and cities and even the state of New Mexico. It's much more far-reaching than anything that we've ever seen and heard. Uh, if you've watched any of the hearings, it's despicable to watch the hearings. When you see the speaker stand up and flat lie about this bill, and I can't put lipstick on a pig, it's lying. It's just flat lying. So, what can we do? What can we do to get this thing changed? Uh, we're trying to get some amendments in there where there will be, um, limits set on a per occurrence of two million dollars instead of the present language that has it per claim. Okay, and also with the attorney fees being basically unlimited. The problem we're seeing with amending the bill is it, no one has the courage to do it. And I'm saying no one on the Democratic side of the aisle. And I think it's for good reason. Al and I had a conversation about this bill way, way back when it was starting and I told him, I said, this is the speaker's hammer and it's obvious at three days left in the session or four, that it is a speaker's hammer. People will not touch it because they don't want to try to amend it because they're afraid that their bills will not get heard. Because as I just told you before, how many bills are stacked up on the floor on both sides? And how many bills are snagged in committee? Things can move very fast at this part of, at this stage in the game on the, on the legislature, but they can also move very slowly. And, and that's who holds the hammer on that right now is the speaker. So, holding the bills hostage is interesting and we see that for other things. Um, when we see this morning and the conversations I heard on the New Mexico County's uh, staff meeting this morning is, is that the, the, the consensus out there is what can we do after this? And what we mean is what can we do as far as bringing ethics charges against, some of the things have been done. This session is stacked full of bills that personally profit the people who are introducing those bills. That's a sad state that we're living in the state, that we're living in the state of New Mexico and we see those happening. I, I'm just a messenger, but I can tell you from personal watching these things, that a lot of this legislation is for personal gain of those legislators that are actually introducing those bills. So, let's talk about our favorite subject, marijuana. How can marijuana do that? Why is marijuana not moving? Some of those same reasons. Some of those same reasons. Personal involvement from legislators on these bills. Marijuana's stuck right now. Are we going to get marijuana in New Mexico? Don't know. Pretty scary because of all the different angles and movements and fingers that marijuana has as far as all of the things it touches. And also we bring back what I just got through saying about the personal aspect of some of these legislators that are trying to move these bills for personal gain. So it's stuck. Most of those bills are stuck in Senate Judiciary. They're not being scheduled. They're not being heard. Lots of things working behind the scenes right now to try to make those bills where they're favorable to work for whoever's introducing them. It's a very bad way to make legislation. And so we ask ourselves in the last few days and I say, some of the folks we're, I'm working with together, how do we, how do we resolve this? How do we do this? How do we fix this? And I think I heard a comment made a while ago, maybe too little, too late. I don't think it's too late. I think the, the, it's just getting the right pieces in place and I think a good example is the presentations that you have been giving on the Arrowhead Center. I think these things can carry forward after the session. We hope, we hope that maybe some influence as far as House Bill Four goes, that we can talk the governor into, if it gets that far, of maybe pulling out some things as such as what it will do to the budget. If it doesn't get heard in finance, if no one has the integrity, and I'm going to say integrity, to carry this forward or refer it, we need seven senators to vote for referral on the, on the Senate floor. We've got five and a half. Maybes, but they're scared. They're very scared right now. Uh, we're working it very hard. We're working it very hard. I won't talk about law enforcement bills. I can just tell you that oil and gas bills, other than things such as a Clean Full St- Fuel Standard, the Environmental Database Bill, uh, others that may be not on my mind, the fracking bill, uh, some of these other bills seem to be stuck and are not going to move. That's good news, okay? But at the same time, we bring this into, into reality of saying that if I'm a business, an oil and gas business or an oil and gas related business, and I see this type of legislation coming into our legislature each year, why would I want to come here to do business? And this is just, I'm just bringing oil and gas because that's near and dear to our hearts, but there's a lot of things in this legislature right now that are telling us that. I have to have regulatory certainty for any business you're in, whether it's meat cutting business or oil and gas business or whatever business that is. And when we see these kind of bills that are coming in introduced every year, it gives us uncertainty. And so those are the things that, in my job, when I say I have a hundred and forty-six bills I'm tracking, why in the world am I tracking a hundred and forty-six bills? That's craziness and it is craziness. I tell myself that every night. You're crazy doing this. But at the same time, it leans forth that, that regulatory certainty within our state that each one of those things are there and they will come back up, trust me. But, uh, I'll let Al talk about the budget and the DOT stuff that's come up in the last few hours and I'll leave that up to the sheriff. He wants to talk about law enforcement bills, which we've seen bouncing back and forth. House Bill, Senate Bill Three Seventy-Five or Six, whichever one it is, it's the uh, Cervantes Bill, which goes hand in hand with House Bill Four, uh, House Bill Four. It's, it's sitting waiting on House Bill Four, uh, to do that, so, anyway. Any questions?
Have you heard anything on our Arrowhead study from up in the?
I have not. I have not heard anything. And, and to qualify that, Commissioner Carlson, um, we've been pretty deep on these other civil rights issues and things like this right now. Trying to, trying to get some of these things stopped, uh, but no, I have not. But I can tell you this, is we still continue to see the awareness of oil and gas's influence on the state, um, talking about, um, one of the transportation bills and I apologize which one it was, but I think it was the, the, um, the one that had the, uh, the design bill in it. One of the legislators brought up the fact that he realized how much money oil and gas puts into the budget. I think it was Garcia. How much money puts into the budget? But he was concerned that all that money was going to come down here and that his roads would get worked on. And, and all.
You tell me we have the same concern?
Yeah.
Exactly the same concern.
And, and I'm going to put a little plug in for Senator Kernan and she hasn't given me any money, so she'll appreciate that. But Senator Kernan did an excellent job of bringing, reining that back in and helping to explain that this had nothing to do with where the money went. It just gave the DOT the flexibility to do that. This particular, um, representative was going to vote against the bill and it came back and voted for it after her explanation. But, but oil and gas, everybody knows where the money comes from. Uh, back to your question, Commissioner Carlson. Everybody knows where the money comes from. And I think, uh, that has a lot to do with where these anti-oil and gas bills have gone. They're not coming back out right now. I'm not saying they won't, but it's, this is, they can happen. They can pull a rabbit out of the hat today. But that's, I think that has a lot to do with it. But it sends a bad message. That's what I said a while ago. It sends a bad message when people continue to put those out and then they get through a committee or two.
That's the message that I'm carrying whenever we're introducing the, uh, Arrowhead Study. It's exactly that, but it doesn't matter if they pass or not. If we keep introducing them, we're telling the oil and gas industry that we don't want them.
And I think the thing that we go further with that, Commissioner, is the fact that i- i- if, it's not just about the oil and gas. It's about the regulatory uncertainty and how that reaches out to, to restaurants and tourism and everything that we do in our community, uh, to put money into the coffers. I mean, tourism puts lots of money in the coffers, okay? But is it really enough here that we can put in new restaurants and have new services and support those other kind of things? Takes a lot of population to do that, to put in services that tourists like to use.
No, I, I share your concern about becoming over-regulated. You know, I think it gets very complicated and we suffer, you know, when that happens, so, um, I appreciate your insight and influence on that because, you know, as someone coming from a place that I'm not as familiar with how this process works, it's alarming to me.
I appreciate the information. I mean, I pick up a lot every time you do this. I am very pleased to hear that maybe some of this stuff hasn't fallen on deaf ears. Uh, and it looks like maybe something I didn't, wouldn't have figured on not but a few weeks ago that maybe we're going to survive this thing, so.
Where's the governor on HB Four? Good question. And the, the, the rumor, okay, there, and not to divulge too much, you know, we can talk sideline if you would like to have, but, but the, the thing that I think I can tell you is, is that there is obviously going to be a physical impact to the state of New Mexico and municipalities if this happens, okay? It's, it, it's, it's just obvious. The unfortunate thing is, is there's no way to quantify that. Okay, and so trying to quantify what impact this is going to have is, is bad. There's all kinds of rumors about, you know, is it, or some of these counties may not be insurable because of this bill if it goes through in its present form. There's, there's all kinds of things out there that are floating around. The main thing is, is if that message, if, if, if the bill gets to the governor's desk, to your questions, uh, Mr. Chairman, if the bill gets to the governor's desk, will the message that that potential impact have influence her to not sign that bill? Also, coming from a national level, okay? Will that money that's being injected from the feds, how will that be affected as far as money coming into our state if those kinds of costs are there? Where's the money going to come from? And so the, the thing is right now, can we get anyone from our congressional delegation in DC to maybe help her understand what this might look like to the state if it's passed? Because it's not like other states and, and, and that's the message we keep hearing from the speaker. Everybody, you know, it's like everybody does it, why shouldn't we do it? And it's, it's not the same thing. It's, it's, it's not apples to apples. Okay, thank you, Jerry.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Item nine on the agenda is the travel consent, uh, request consent agenda. We don't have.
Item nine on the agenda is the travel consent, request consent agenda. We don't have any, we have no emergency business. So the next item is elected officials and legislators. So elected officials.
Good morning, everyone. SB 220, I'm gonna start out on a good note. SB 220 was the, is the amendments to the body cam, the horrible law, horribly written law that came out of last session. The, we actually, it sounds like, and again, you gotta knock on the wood, we might have a win there. And they, there were changes made to it that were, would have cost us, cost everyone, an enormous amount of money. Where if, they were gonna amend it to where if we activated our emergency lights, we had to have body cams that automatically came on. And that right there shows the ignorance of some of the people that are introducing this. Because we have cameras in our cars that automatically come on when you turn on emergency equipment. So why would you need the person driving to have their camera come on automatically? If you draw your weapon, your sidearm from the holster, it automatically would come on. If you pull a taser out, it would automatically come on. But we don't have that. The problem with that was, we don't have that technology. I think maybe one sheriff's office in the state has that part of that technology right now. We would have to redo our entire, and we spent well, well into the six figures, getting close to the seven figures on our camera equipment for my deputies. And we would have to scrap that because it's not compatible with that technology. We'd have to scrap that and start fresh with a whole different system. And I would have to wonder if some of the people introducing these bills might have some stock in that, the way that we've seen the legislation going. But fortunately, that was taken, that we're told that is gone, those three requirements. And there was actually some good language added that said if, when we're doing a death notification, we don't have to have it on. If strangely enough, when we're disarming a bomb for EOD, we don't, that made me scratch my head. I was like, well, what difference does that make? But okay. And then there was one other instance that I can't remember what it was. But we're still going by the premise that, I think her name's Kadina, that spoke about it last time on the floor, where she said that we can make our own local policy at the, at our individual agencies, saying when it doesn't have to be on. And so we're still going by that because that's what they said in open court, uh, open court, in open session. And said that we do have the ability to do that. So we're doing, and we're being, but we're being very cautious, Cass. We're not over-
Better be.
Yeah, we're not being too crazy with it. And I've told, I've told the guy, I said, relook at the policy, look and make it work, but don't get crazy. We need to be reasonable about this. So we're working on that. The SB 227, that's the one that, the really dangerous one that would put our tack team in jeopardy, that would put any kind of a search warrant, it would put us behind the eight ball. We're waiting to see how that one works out. HB Four, as Jerry talked about, 28 counties oppose this right now. 28 counties. And I don't know how many municipalities, even the city of Albuquerque has opposed this. The city of Santa Fe has opposed this. But we saw how that worked out with the red flag bill and red flag law now. We had 30 counties opposing, and it didn't matter. So I don't know. I'm hoping that there's gonna be some progress made against it. We'll see what happens there. And again, like Jerry said, thank goodness, 12 o'clock on Saturday, ding ding, the bell rings and hopefully we've mitigated the damage to our state. So I really don't know. It's nice to see us, I can't believe I'm even saying this, but that I have to even, it's nice to see us in yellow. I mean, I guess you gotta be grateful. And that's the sad part, is we're grateful for these little freedoms that we're giving back. It's kinda sad, honestly. But hopefully we'll progress further along. And it's hard to argue the political punishment side of it because Lee County's in green. So, I mean, I reeled back on that a little bit, but I still don't like it. Good news with our agency, we have two individuals, two deputies, cadets in the Law Enforcement Academy in Hobbs. They're number one and number two academically, which I'm really proud of. And that's a testament to how my folks prepared them, but also a testament to these young men, how well they're doing in the academy. We're hoping that we'll get a valedictorian out of the academy. I think the last one we had was Chief Griffith, when he went through at 54 years old. He was valedictorian. So we're hoping we get one of those again. And we are, we're down, we're down two, two. That's all we're missing right now, is two positions, which is incredible. We just, we have just hired some, we've hired some great folks. HR's been helping us out tremendously. We're working wonderfully with HR, getting these folks, getting their, we, people are now looking at our hiring process and going, how do you do that? How are you doing this so, it's streamlined? And we're not hiring junk. We're hiring good folks. We're rejecting, right Roxanne, we're rejecting a lot. We're getting a lot of applications. And we're not, we're taking the cream of the crop. And it's awesome. It feels really good. So we're gonna keep pushing forward. We've got some retirements coming up, I believe. We're gonna, and I misspoke when I talked about the budget, that I wasn't gonna ask for anything different last time. JB Parker, our process server, is a uncertified position. That's one increase that we're gonna look at. It's very small. We're gonna, we wanna reclassify his position to a certified deputy position because it's not good having a non-law enforcement carrying a gun and all that out there. So I think Cass will agree with that.
I agree with that.
But that's one small change. So we've got a couple of, like I said, we have a couple of retirements probably coming up. We actually have a potential for three or four. But with Roxanne's help and HR's help, I think we're, I'm not that concerned about it. We've got good folks coming and we're hiring them right and left, so that's good news. Anyway, we are, I got a lot of complaints of traffic. It actually was partly within the city limits. But racing out on, we've worked North Canal quite a bit. We had racing between the Ford House and the bypass, which- Well, I can hear it too. I mean, so I was like, yeah, I get it. I understand. So we've been running a project, I think they call it Project F-150 or something like that. But they've been, they've been running traffic and I hope that everybody, if anybody's listening out there, understands that no more racing out there. We're shutting that down. So, and we've been working with Jason quite a bit to get out there and help his folks out. So I'm really happy. The legislature is definitely a downer. But as far as what we're doing here in Eddie County and what's happening at my agency, I'm very, very happy with it. So I think, I think y'all can, I think y'all can be proud of your sheriff's office, how it's operating, and the deputies that are out there working real hard to make sure everything goes good. So thank y'all for your support too. It's really nice. It really is. You make it easy. Al makes it very easy for us to get our jobs done. And the commission does as well, and all the supporting, I mean, I could name every department head, director in here because they all help us so much. So it's great to work in Eddie County, so rah rah. Any questions for me?
No questions, just congratulations on your guys at the academy and on having only two positions open and retaining positions. Like that's a testament to you and Chief Griffith and Roxanne and the whole administrative team. So, great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
We appreciate you guys.
All dressed up today, somewhere to go.
Has all his ash marks and stuff on him.
Awesome. I was wondering if the silver ones, if that's a reflection of what's going on upstairs?
It is. It's probably gonna be, it's getting worse.
Are there any other elected officials that would like to address the commission? Seeing none, county manager comments. Spent an active couple of weeks. We mentioned earlier that Commissioner Henry and Commissioner McCutcheon and Ms. Haley from Artesia Chamber hosted a Zoom meeting last week, and I'll let Commissioner McCutcheon talk a bit about that. I've also been on a few other Zoom meetings. I'd gotten a call from one of the, one of the citizens that he'd received a call from the governor's office and had been chewed out for comments that I made. I was like, well, maybe they're listening. But I don't know, I wouldn't presuppose that those comments have prompted action. But I think it's that continuing message that maybe does have some influence. Yesterday, Monday, the governor sent a letter to President Biden, in her official capacity, asking for his consideration in changing the executive orders and the moratoriums that are affecting the oil and gas. And he didn't say explicitly asking for an exemption, but rather being recognized for the steps that the state has taken in towards cleaner energy and things like that, and recognizing the impact that oil and gas has on the state of New Mexico and the budget that the governor is responsible for. So I thought that was, I thought that was great. My earlier comments had been that there wasn't any visibility to that. So there was a letter from Secretary Probst to the Department of Interior a month ago. That's the only thing that we'd seen. And so I did talk to the governor's office about that and explained our situation, said, hey, show us, help us, we'll carry the message. So I expressed my appreciation to the governor for having that letter to the president and asking for that consideration. Because it has a, it has a direct and noticeable impact on businesses in the industry that do business in Eddie County. The rig count in the Permian continues to rise, but rig counts in New Mexico have dropped since those executive orders have been put in place. We have seen in the local media, or national media, where large oil and gas companies have changed their budget strategies and outlooks for working on federal property in the Permian Basin. Well, the only federal property in the Permian Basin is in Eddie and Lee County. So it has had a direct and measurable effect. So we'll continue our message about supporting that industry that continues to generate cash for the state and of which the county gets a small portion of it. But it's just good business. It's diverse business. Those are great jobs for people in our community, and we want to continue to support that. We also have had a couple of discussions. I sent a letter to Senator Munoz and Representative Lundstrom as the chairs of their respective finance committees in their Senate and the House, telling them that we hadn't heard anything about the brine well, and we saw something in the budget that said there was gonna be. So that letter also made its way to the governor's office. I don't think I'm gonna get a Christmas card this year. But it did prompt conversation. It, which had the desired effect, right? Brought all the right people to the table. That project is $18 million short of being ready to go or finished. And we said we weren't gonna, without any input, without being asked, we weren't gonna, we had no reason to support it. They had $5 million in SB Two, which was way short. So Mr. Fanning referred to, in the excise tax, in previous sessions, they had earmarked a portion of that money to help fund the brine well. Secretary Probst, Secretary Sandoval for Transportation, and Secretary Romero from DFA have all agreed to ask for a one-year extension on that excise tax to take that money and help fund the brine well. So the $5 million from the state, estimated $10 million from the excise tax, would mean there's $3 million that they would look to local government to match. So between the city and the county, we'd have to come up with a million and a half each. I said, with appropriate backup information, I would bring that to the commission and talk to them about it. So we're collecting that information, but just put that on the radar. I'm not pleased about it, but I don't wanna, I don't wanna lose that other $10 million because the local governments didn't participate. And I appreciate Secretary Sandoval, Transportation, who we have, the county has a great relationship with because of Wes and Jason. And we've partnered on lots of things, his willingness to extend that another year, which is $10 million out of his potential budget. So I wanna, I would like to acknowledge his support and recognize that and maybe talk with Roberto as we're rolling up our budget and making our estimates on revenue incomes and things like that, if we might not be able to find a million and a half to support that. But I'll come back to the commission with that information, details and recommendations at a later date. On the vaccination front, we've continued to have a clinic every Monday. The first one was a rousing success with, you know, over 500 doses. We were hoping for bigger and better things. We did 300 doses last week, and we did just under 200 doses yesterday. The problem isn't the vaccine availability, it's the people availability in the appointment process. So I've had conversations with State Department of Health and a couple of folks there that are up the, up the organization chain a little bit about how do we resolve that conflict, or not conflict, but disparity between the state registration databases. There are 2,000 individuals who have registered who would potentially be eligible for vaccinations. Here, yeah. But as of Sunday night, Monday morning, we only had 68 appointments confirmed. So there's either a problem in the database or there's a problem in the process to complete the appointments. So I said, hey, send us the list. We'll systematically call through that, either clean up the database, find out what the hangup is. But we need to get, we need to get folks vaccinated. So here's my little soapbox for all those folks that listened to the commission meeting. Please use the state registration for, to get an appointment or prepare for an appointment. Because at some point here, they're going to, talking with the state folks yesterday, they anticipate being able to fully service all of the Tier 1B, which would be the essential workers, which would be a significant portion of the population, and then be ready to move to Phase Two, which would be the general population. President Biden said he expected every American to be eligible, or to be able to get a vaccine by May 1. That's just a few weeks away. We have the resources. We have the commitment. We have generally the vaccine availability. We just need people to be in the, be in the process to get the vaccination.
We need them to register.
We need them to register. We need them to complete the appointment process so that we can help them be vaccinated. So if that's what they choose to do. we can help them be, be vaccinated. So if that's what they choose to do. And I think, this is my opinion, Al Lewis, I think everybody that has an opportunity should get the vaccination. So everybody has their own opinion. But I think, I think it's a positive outcome. I think some of those efforts, along with the practices we've been doing, have helped us move to yellow. I'm watching the incident numbers, presuming those are accurate and reflective. We're, we're, we're on our way within, I don't know, two to four weeks of moving. So steady on doing what we're doing. But I think the vaccinations help. I think there's, there's a lot of positive things there. So the removal of some of those restrictions is a, is a huge benefit. I've seen a lot of that in the community already with, you know, it's just a kind of a breath of relief, that little flicker of hope that, hey, we're, we're going to make it. So that's probably plenty for now. So I'll stop. Any questions?
Well, I just want to say again, thank you for the vaccine efforts. I agree. I feel that if anyone is eligible for the vaccine, I think you should receive the vaccine, especially Jennifer Amadou for her efforts on securing them and all, everyone working. I know Gay and Tara have been working in our fire department, EMS services. So it's a big job. So I'm just very appreciative for those efforts. I've been talking about how I've been sitting on the mayor's mental health task force committee, specifically for the Life House organization. I'm sure that all of you or some of you have been made aware that they did purchase the former Lanthin Health Service Center from Lakeview. It was acquired by Lakeview. Life House has purchased that from Lakeview and that will be their inpatient rehab. They have very big ambitious goals over there. They've also acquired Golden Services Counseling Services. So within the Life House umbrella, they will have inpatient rehab, counseling, and hopeful in the future to have detox capabilities for drug abuse recovery rehabilitation. Just with that acquisition, they're acquiring forty-five jobs from the VIA Rehab and Golden Services. They're creating fifteen new jobs immediately on day one, which takes effect April first. And with the total of growing a hundred and twenty-three jobs over the next year or so. So this is a very big project for a community, a very important project for the community, that we won't be losing these counseling services. So I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention and, you know, hopefully we can continue to support those efforts. And that's all I have.
Awesome. I would just say, we presented in Lima County. We're headed to the City of Demi for this afternoon. So we're going to keep pushing, pushing out on the Arrowhead Study.
Great.
That's all.
Commissioner Beer?
I'd just like to say thanks to all the department heads. I can remember not too many years ago, when the tact that this, these commission meetings took with the comments and a lot of other stuff was less than pleasant. It's changed and it's changed because things are working. I mean, our roads are being built. We're educating people on the Arrowhead Study. With the pandemic being what it is, you know, we're going above and beyond getting people vaccinated. It's just, you know, I'm, I'm very pleased to be part of this group. It's getting an awful lot done. And that's everybody across the board. Thank you.
I've not, I've not much to add. Just to echo a little bit of what Commissioner Cross said about the Arrowhead Study and presentation. Basically, what we did is, is Jerry Strong and Haley at the Chamber of Artesia put it together. John and I were just there. And then Al did all of the talking. So it went really well because everybody knows how good Al talks. So.
Caliprod had a little help.
Yeah. We said, hey, welcome here, commissioners, and I will now inform you of where your money all comes from. He did, he did an exceptional job. So I look forward to getting him in more of those uncomfortable situations and exploiting his tongue talents across the state and convincing and educating people on, on where their budgets come from. So other than that, I have, but we do, but we do appreciate, we do appreciate our county managers.
I guess with that. We have no executive session. Mr. Chairman, thank you for your comments and your encouragement. We'll strive to continue that process. And, and all joking aside, all that you folks do in promoting the county and helping raise awareness that people don't have at this point, kudos. Good on you all. So thank you very much. Last item is number fifteen. You want to adjourn?
Want to adjourn.
All right. Got a motion and?
Second.
A second.
I would second if I would second.
Motion is second. Please call for the vote.
Yes.
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 You drive safe.